Interjections along the circular lane edge and terminating at the road that connects City Hall with Center Park. A very simple plan view and this plan actually has a couple of different things as you can see in the drawing. It not only shows the layout of all those pieces, but it also starts looking at material finishes for just one of the spaces so you can actually... What helped us is it starts helping looking at the level of finish and quality of those different spaces and again, starting this time at the bottom of the screen, I don't know if this actually shows up here, at this side of the screen which is about eight o'clock. We'll start there, that's directly across from the residential property. We're in this, we're there, but it really applies to everything. We did actually have a lot of program there, so this is a great benefit we feel to not only, it's a great benefit to the Dollar Residence in Albedo who have come here. Next to that, we have the road that connects all the way down here to City Hall and then that has interjects into the park. We've actually done the sewel out in that area and that then flows onto this very flexible lawn space which is fronted by the O'Callaghan Jimmy Buffett stage which happens at that point. This parcel here is still, right now, we're cutting the lawn, remember that's where the future restaurant will be. So, in the meantime, since we don't have our other restaurant operator on board, we just create that out, that'll be a lawn town, so it's very flexible and actually until the amphitheater, the main amphitheater gets built, that wide lawn area will give you a lot of flexibility for anybody who's performing on that stage and we'll get detail about that stage in a moment. You can see the little area here as a placeholder, so the restaurant's not there, if you remember the original drawing, the restaurant was actually anchoring that side of this main center spine on the retail street. So we've added three, a triple row of palms through there, so you've got this great palm canopy, nice shaded soft area, there's gravel seating underneath it or gravel underneath it and we're taking flexible seating, table for chairs because that does front the wet deck which is this larger red piece that terminates the retail street. That space is the wet deck and has the vertical feature, we'll show you a couple of different ideas that we had for that vertical item. Next to that's the family lawn area which is a raised linted well that has stairs arranged so they can use green formal seating and then when the 4th of July fireworks event happens, you've got a lot of edge seating for people walking on that activity over the lake, both the wet deck on a daily basis as well. Next to that separating that, while we get to the purple space here is the children's playground. Separating the family lawn from the playground is at grade level space, the restrooms are in the middle of that, up against the street and then out against the promenade building, promenade here, the link front promenade is a coffee shop spot that we've gone and put it back in the design efforts that we're doing now because we think that's actually quite a, what are called structural piece, if that piece wasn't there, the park seemingly would look like it's missing something, so. And for the top lot and the family lawn in that area, they can coffee shop, it's really kind of a small food services selection, no brand, as far as operations here. Next to that, the purple you can see is the top lot that we talked about and we'll get into that in a minute about how, what form that has, what kind of character it has. And then here, the last large interjection with the park is where the future boat dock facilities will be and that really terminates, starts to get to the terminus of the retail piece and started that residential. We have a large flexible lawn area adjacent north of that, that will, that is between the playground and the boathouse area to the future farmer's market and that lawn, of course, accommodate events on either side. We have a boardwalk feature that moves around so that in case the future farmer's market is actually using that space on an event, you can still get it circling around the lane with this boardwalk feature which then ties into the grading of this large amphitheater that, you know, is being built in phase one. The one thing that we did, if you remember the last effort, that was a much larger bank of stairs, brick and concrete, we minimized that mostly with the grading, so we took that money, it still works, we can still get up to it through steps and through ramps, but we removed a lot of the structure out of it so we could use that money elsewhere. And at the same time, it ties nicely with this whole wetland character. And again, one of the major moves, I just wanted to remind everybody of this, we saw the great benefit and instead of turning your back on the wetland, we actually repressed that because of the north end of this wetland is going to start down here. So, City Hall way in actually physically from a watershed standpoint, we're actually connecting these two spaces and so bringing the character of the wetland across the amphitheater into this boardwalk feature and then actually bringing that into a playground and using the wetland character and form of that playground as well, really does that intermeshing of the civic nature of the natural environment around this. The remainder of the lake from the dog park over to the boardwalk is a naturalized plant and cybercatalytic species. It has a perimeter walkway and will need a handrail on it actually because the great difference goes all the way around to this large point here. The one thing that we, like I said, we graded this out, we removed the retaining walls that were in this area and graded that out to a nice three to one, which is a very comfortable slope so that you still get views out to the lake, but you just have to do something else. They don't have the dog park in this set, but I'll show you that in just a moment in the more detailed drawings. As we move through this, this is the first interjection at the Jimmy Buffett stage area, so the red, in the plan view here, the red in the lower left corner is the connection from City Hall and that's where the Veterans Tribute is and we'll get to that in more detail in just a second. But here now you can see how we've integrated the space between the Veterans Tribute and shown in red, parts of it in red, the other part is the entrance, because this really is our first entrance to the park as you're walking along the circular walkway, along the road that comes around the street. This is our first entrance into the park proper, so we have a large feature here as before and the two white pylons, you'll see in just a second, and we brought that lawn now though into this space so this lawn can be used for multiple events, not only for the Veterans Tribute, but for the service Jimmy Buffett stage, which is going to take a lot of weight for the first few years of the park until the amphitheater gets built. And then the future restaurant, which is the larger part of this lawn area, until that comes online, it's a very flexible space and we're using very large tree material in the soul to anchor those points of new shade along the promenade and really what we're doing in all this scene, we're creating a series of ruins along this linear prom, between the linear promenade and the street scale. So what we have shown here in the model view is the first cast at the Buffett stage. The sizing of this is, right now, it's about 12 to 14 feet deep by 16 to 18 feet wide and that includes, that can handle up to a five piece band. And, you know, we're still kind of fine tuning that with some other consultants to give an idea of, if you don't want to make it too big at the same time, you don't want to make it too small or, you know.
How many people are left over this?
Six and a half. So, and again, we talked to a lot of musicians and, you know, five piece bands and they said they work on areas smaller than this. So what we're trying to do is to give enough flexibility, but it's a very simple open structure. It will have a guard rail or a end rail going all the way around it, this is about the structure itself. So what we're doing, keeping with that character is there are wood columns, it's very similar to the boardwalk construction, but you'll see in just a moment. So it's wood columns and then we splice the steel post into the top of that, wood beams and then very simple canopy and certainly with the, we probably, we need a little bit of help direction from the city is how much technical information apparatus you want to put into the structure itself. Certainly power, you have to supply, but it's the rigging and it's the contact points and all that sort of thing that make the cost certainly go up. What we're suggesting, at least at this point, is to provide the platform and the grid canopy and because a lot of different bands, who they are, the portability of the equipment to be able to get lights and rigging is actually quite versatile, a lot of people rig that and rig that and bring wood.
How easy is it to get? You say that and I looked at the picture. It's kind of difficult to get that, with rigging and such, as I'm looking at the traversing to get down there.
But what we have, it's a good point and thank you for pointing that out, accessibility is because this is up at elevation, I think, sixty-one and a half, which all the promenades is at the same elevation, sixty-one and a half. And the reason that is, is at the maximum storm limit, the water level rise in that lake to about elevation sixty-one plus or minus, so you're about, you know, six, eight inches below the top of that promenade. So this structure is also at sixty-one and then what we've done is you can see the boardwalk connection coming off to the left here and then along this piece, this is all level. So to get equipment to it, you're actually never going downstairs and back up.
You go up and you sit around to the red and come back and?
Well, not to the red, you can see on the, on the right side of this tree, this is a walkway that's actually at grade and then you're on a boardwalk.
Right, and you have a gray.
No, it's all, you're all at grade. You stay at promenade level the entire way across. So it's a board, there's a, at the end against the water, there's a boardwalk.
Right.
Extension.
Okay, so you come across the boardwalk, then you get to the green.
Right.
Then what do you?
You either, it's like I say, you gotta go to the left and around.
Right.
Right.
Actually, I take that back, there is a walkway connection through here, but it's just graphically not shown.
Yeah.
That's a good guess, I'm sorry, that's what we were talking about.
You look at.
I see.
She just went by one of the products, you can see that.
I was told not to go ahead, so I didn't go ahead.
Good point.
Yeah, there is a connection.
Well, you weren't here for the instructions, I was just having a. Can I, can I go back for one minute?
Yes.
Okay, go back one more.
Question, can you talk through this one?
I can, actually, it relates to the whole stage, to the whole stage layout. You're in the residential area with the stage. The whole stage is to the left by, I don't know how much around the circle at eight o'clock. I'll say the restaurants or whatever for the future are going to be at five o'clock. So we're putting everybody over here to have restaurants and stuff over here, this is the residential. I'm just saying, dropping the location of where it was, that, the location previously had been on that side, I don't really follow that side. We're in the center.
This location has not moved since September.
Yeah, it's the same location.
It's just like I said, that's my only, I'm looking at it now. It flips and it ran to the resident, or to the residential side, the quiet, what we had envisioned is the quiet side, the residential side versus over here where you're going to want to, again, if there's a restaurant, people are gathering, gathering, that's all.
Well, that's a good point. I think the whole part of it's the activity center, quiet.
The future restaurant is actually.
I'm just talking about the one restaurant, this is our whole, you know, someday this will be restaurants over here.
Right.
On this side.
Right.
I'm just saying, it's halfway around.
Well, what I was going to point out is.
If you look at that floor, you'll see that it is right where the restaurant starts.
It is.
Restaurants are on this edge.
Right.
But from here, from here down is all residential.
Jimmy Buffett stage to the Signet Lawn. Now, look up, look up there now, see?
Right, but across the street is all residential.
This is residential.
That's right where the restaurant, road starts, right across the street where the stage is. So you're going to come in and make, off the main boulevard, you're going to come in, on the left side, there'll be a restaurant on the left side.
You're going to go, come up City Park.
No, it's going to be residential, am I correct? Or am I reading this entirely wrong? Okay. So the whole left side down here on the bottom, on the south of that, across the street, as you're coming in, will be all residential. That's all I'm just trying to say, is it's a residential side, nobody's getting with it. Again, I'm saying, it looks to me that we're at eight o'clock with the stage.
The stage is at six o'clock. Yeah, the stage, the stage is nine where the park is, it's on the other side of this street where the restaurant starts. That's what they're trying to say.
Yeah, it's, it's.
This isn't the main.
You're looking at the dog park.
No, I'm looking at this as the main road, sorry. This is the main road. Got it, I apologize. I'm seeing the other road on, again, depending on which one you're looking at. This looks like the main road to me.
Yeah.
I'm going to look at this, this is the main.
But that, the, oh, to the left is the main road, yes.
Gotcha, I apologize, I'm looking at this as the main boulevard coming in and going out. Just can't see the lineup.
Right, right. It's the other one.
So that's the main retail street. The only thing I want to add now, let's get back to the actual stage for a second. Okay. You know, electric, yes, stage, make the stage as big as you can make it without going too big, you can always make them too small and then, you know, that high school jazz band doesn't fit there. Well, and that's kind of what the director made from you. More width used and depth is what they need. Right. And it's got to have lights in it, you know, at least rigging, at least some sort of stage lights or, you know, you'll have a high school band coming or, you know, a jazz band coming and they're going to be in the dark of the night. So you've got to have at least, in my opinion, and I'm not an expert, but at least one set of rigging, you know, with, with the bank of lights.
Thank you, colored lights, whatever it's called.
You know, just something under there so, you know, we can light these groups up. The smaller groups who are going to use that aren't going to be the sophisticated groups. They're going to be more around the other side. We were going to provide a canopy lights to light that deck, but it wasn't going to be a performance level. I think I would go with a bank maybe, basic, it doesn't, you know, yeah, not, you know, Bob Carish or Dr. Philip Steeder-ish, but just, you know, like Steve said, bank maybe. Right, right, right across the top of that roof, right across, not bad, you just a couple of, to lighten it up so they don't. You know, they usually have like lights and reds and, you know, so the red's kind of.
You integrate it behind that.
Whatever. Counselor Hank and I, much more experienced with that, he'll take care of that.
There you go.
I have a question about the stage also, you said you're in a building that is wood.
Yes.
Have you considered the cement products instead of paintwork, which would have to be replaced because of some years?
For the decking material or?
For decking and the stage structure.
The wood boardmark, life of that level of wood construction is twenty-five, thirty years, is that, if that's something that we want to look at, we're going to bring product, we certainly can.
I was just wondering if you've even dressed it or not.
Yes. Do you see that wood wall there? Do boardwalks have that synthetic material?
Looks like a dress.
Yeah, the tracks, right.
Well, that's the decking, we're talking about the actual structure, the beams and everything else.
Well, I'm just saying, it's all going to be around water and that's what, you know, they say twenty, twenty-five years, but wood doesn't, doesn't last very long.
And I know.
I think you're more concerned with the deck than the walk on.
Yes.
The posts go to the, you mean that gap?
Well, that would be a consideration too because they're going to be underneath the ground and they do make the post out of that cement product also, they make it off. It is more costly, but if you've looked on the road, you're never going to have to replace it.
And that's fine if it's just done, and we'll talk about the budget more in a second.
Yes.
So the next thing we want to talk about is the Veterans Tribute. This is again, just for orientation about the stage, you can see the very top of the drawing and the movable walkway is now here, so the lawn panel does continue and there is a walkway that does make that connection all the way through. What we've done for, we met with the committee for the Veterans Tribute and what we have is instead of it being, there are several ways to approach it, and one of them is an object within space, what we chose to do here so that if we could integrate it within the park and so we can have flexibility of use, but at the same time also have a space that can be flexible for future and at the same time also have convey a deep meaning since we are next to a body of water. We've located it here, so this is the roadway, so this, the main road coming to City Hall comes in at this point, we have two large light pylons, you'll see in just a moment. We have a decorative tiled wall or, 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 or vintage seats here around the decorative tile fountain and then the dog park is here to the left with a very large edge and tree canopy separating that and then the actual tribute itself is located in this space here and what you can see in the lower left is the idea for that tribute wall and I don't know if it's necessary to go into the actual ideas behind that.
I briefly touched on it.
Is that the water?
Yeah, so what the charge was very briefly, the charge was to represent the six branches of service to the US military and special accommodation they gave to the ladies and gentlemen. So what we've done is a simple granite wall that sort of fronts this water rung here, you can see the elevation there, so it's a very rough hill, granite, out of that, projecting out of that, standing proud of our six services, each with a blin, internally blin insignia, probably out of stainless steel, but at and from each one of those, there's a water weir that pours into a rung that then feeds out, you can see the break between the two walls and feeds out visually into the lake and the ideal line is that there are lives that are at service, so each one of the services, there is a level of service so it becomes one common trough and the idea is that if somebody wanted to choose to have a memorial or a paid tribute here is that you could place a flower or something in that trough and the water goes out along the rung, out between Rita, the void, between the two walls where you can see it and gather, so there's a sense of departure.
I agree, and the red and white stripes and the flag. What material are you going to use to create the red and white stripes?
Oh, I'm sorry.
To represent the flag as you have a flag.
I guess then there would be a higher quality stone finish so that it's compatible with brick that we're using on the street scale, but it's going to be a higher level finish. And actually, if I go back a slide.
Yeah, the stripes on top of it, I saw, the stars, excuse me. It's hard to see up there, but you can see it in our eyes. Okay. Yeah, the star is on top of the water.
Those, those, that's actually a large star.
Okay.
Looks like stars, you do that. And the idea for it is, again, that that's a very simple trough, so again, not trying to build a lot of maintenance in operation, just trying to give it a lot of meaning and value for what we have, so it's, it works both at day and at night and then what we did, slightly different than this drawing, is we pulled, this is what we call a home remembrance, so the names would be on this wall and we pulled this wall back to this level and had changed this into seating so that it really became multipurpose from the standpoint of the park use and the tribute use and you can see that kind of in this view, what we did is, is three different model shots of what this tribute might, how it might be used on any given day through the park where, because it is open and it is integrated, anybody can walk through there and you actually feel comfortable walking through there because it feels like part of the park on a, on a day, you know, on Veterans Day or Memorial Day because the park is now interconnected that, plus it has a lot of room to be able to accommodate different sized groups as well as what's probably most important is if somebody is in there by themselves, can contribute to it, the space doesn't feel too big. And I don't know if it's necessary to go into the actual ideas behind that.
I briefly touched on it.
Yeah, so what the charge was, very briefly, the charge was to represent the six branches of service to the US military and special accommodation they give to the DAS, UAWs and veterans. So what we've done is a simple granite wall that sort of fronts this water rung here. You can see the elevation there. So it's a very rough hill, granite, out of that, projecting out of that, standing proud of our six services, each with a lint, internally lint insignia, probably have stainless steel. But at and front each one of those, there's a water weir that pours into a rung that then feeds out. You can see the break between the two walls and feeds out visually into the lake. And the ideal line is that their lives that are part of the service. So each one of the services, there is a level of service, so it becomes one common trough. And the idea is that if somebody wanted to choose to have a memorial or a paid tribute here is that you could place a flower or something in that trough and the water goes out along the rung, out between Rita, the void, between the two walls where you can see it and gather. So there's a, there's a sense of departure.
I had created the red and white stripes and flag.
Sorry?
What material are you going to use to create the red and white stripes?
Oh, I'm sorry.
To represent the flag as you have floor.
Yes, then there would be a higher quality stone finished so that it's compatible with brick that we're using on the street stage, but it's more of a pyramidal finish. And actually, if I go back a slide.
Yeah, the stripes on top of it, I saw, the stars, excuse me. It's hard to see up there, but you can see it in our eyes.
Okay.
Yeah, the stars on top of the wall.
Um, not with those.
Those, those, that's actually a large wall.
Okay.
Looks like stars, you do that.
And the idea for it is, again, that that's a very simple trough. So again, not trying to build a lot of maintenance operations, just trying to give it a lot of meaning and value for what we have. So it's, it works both at day and at night. And then what we did, slightly different than this drawing, is we pulled, this is what we call a home remembrance of the names who'd be on this wall. And we pulled this wall back to this level and had changed this into seating so that it really became multipurpose from the standpoint of the park use and the tribute use. And you can see that kind of in this view, what we did is, is three different model troughs and one of this tribute line, how it might be used on any given day through the park where because it is open and it is integrated, anybody can walk through there. You actually feel comfortable walking through there because it feels like part of the park. On a, on a day, you know, on Veterans Day or Memorial Day, because the park is now interconnected that plus it has a lot of room to be able to accommodate different sized groups. As well as what's probably most important is if somebody is in there by themselves, can't contribute to it, the space doesn't feel too big, it doesn't feel too small, but feel too hard. And that's what that last line represents. So.
So you lowered that, the wall down to a sketch.
We shortened.
We shortened.
Yeah, you'll see in the next, in the next sketch.
How that works. So this is a sketch now coming off the main road from City Hall. So here are the light pylons that we talked about and what's been approved, you approved before for the, there's a similar light pylon, pathway pylons through here that start on an extra road out and work their way in, it kind of has a firm sort of motif to it. And then what we thought is to expand on that is to start bringing in other elements that are indicative of sound and the video's history and part of that legacy. Here we start using more celery motif. The fountain here, you can see in the center, that the color tile wall, we would actually probably do the beauty berry logo that you see down in this corner and just make a running band of that. So it's a, a great, and the fountain is about four, again, it's about four feet high, so we actually get quite a bit of exposure to that and because it's not built yet, I can still, we can still tweak things. Taking the base that you see in that sketch and actually reducing that down to more of a flush curve so that we actually get more exposure to that.
As a suggestion, if we're going through a branding strategy right now, you know, that might be a better thing to put around that band if we come up with something that really fits. You know, perhaps if we come up with something out of the brand, we'll send it to you guys, you get more creative with it.
Sure.
As you usually do, you know, you can actually have that thing say over you or the branding statement. Whatever, maybe, just as a thought.
Surfing.
Surfing. But I don't think we like that. I just think everybody likes the direction of it. See, anybody not.
Yeah, and then on the left you can see how the wall was shortened and then we integrated the seating.
Well, this one really kind of shows the whole picture.
Yeah.
And you can see how the lawn panel above the stage and in the background, that really gets integrated. And again, this is really the first point, either walking along the street stage or the door or coming from the roadway to the south, this is your first point to enter the park and get to the promenade. After that, we moved along in the plain view, the very bottom, you can see the grass, an edge of the grass panel. This is the right side. So now you can see the palm box up there and then the blue is not water, that's actually gravel. So we know that when the future restaurant comes in, instead of tearing that up, it's actually good to have a little tactile surface there that accommodates a lot of activity, chairs, furniture moving without worrying about lawn. And certainly lawn and shade with a lot of activity is always a recipe for bad looking lawn. So it's very similar, if you've been down, downtown Orlando, the sun, the sun truck walk, they would have the oak trees and the gravel and the seating with that. It's very similar with Kenyatta. And you guys are placeable with.
And I think we came out of the last workshop with, you know, it's nice that we integrated the park, it's nice that we plan that maybe in the future, but, you know, that maybe in the future may never come. You know, it might just all become part of the park because there might be so much mass on the other side. And height, there's going to be a lot of height on the other side.
Right. And that's where we feel that by adding these additional columns, they're a little more expensive, but we're placing them about 15 feet on center at the tightest. So those fronds will actually be touching, so it'll give you a nice filtered shade through.
A nice area to sit, sit like, watch nature and look at.
The soft edge versus the harder edge of the family line. What we have, what this, the sketch in the middle, the model view shows is a promenade view. You're standing on the promenade. Obviously, the palms are there to your right and you're looking along the water's edge at the family lawn. So three vertical pylons that you see there are along the promenade edge. So the wet deck goes from left to right where the woman's standing in the picture. All the way over, you'll see a tower element off to that side. We've thought a lot about what this tower element might be. In the original sketch, you might remember the concept, it was more a chimney sort of feature. But what we're looking at is how you make it something that is a lot more kind of interactive. You can see a lot more bang to the buck if you're building something vertical. And one idea possibly has revenue generating, you know, potential. So the idea that we have for this is, you can see the image down here for the lower, lower left, is a video panel system. It's outdoor rated. We were suggested using one of those panels, they're about three foot by four foot, and stacking those probably six highs. So it's about a 14 to 16 foot high tower that you can program as one stream. As you can see in the image, that this thing can move. And obviously, the simpler the programming, the less it costs if you start paying for a lot of that stuff. But the idea is that you can, we can use it interactively with the wet deck that happens in front. So it can be very simple silhouette sort of shades, Christmas time, there's snowflakes dropping. The other opportunity from a, from a revenue generating is sponsorship or advertising if you so choose. That's the, and the great thing about this is because it is software driven, you can change that to whatever you want to make.
Is there a music system built into the park as we always talk, you know, speakers, hand drum, music?
We are going to have that as well. And, and so the graphics that happen with that.
You know, the kids could be having a blast, you know, whatever appropriate music, a city could play. You know, splashing around with that wall, dancing.
Right.
Never be silhouettes, we need people who'll be dancing, who'll be doing music. And that was kind of it.
I love creating people.
That, that wet deck, what kind of surface is that, that people would be walking on?
Type, it holds bacteria.
For a great segue, the wet deck is a, is one of those discussions we need to have as far as expectation because that, as far as everything in the park, that probably has the highs and price tag associated with it. So the, what we need is kind of an expectation of, obviously balancing budget and function and operations and maintenance and install cost. One of the things that we proposed on this sketch that happens in the middle of the left-hand side of the page, you can see the tower element, this little aerial shot. Either two channels, just linear channels because of the very tight space. And again, this plaza is linked up with the retail street. So as we're coming through here, the column actually could be double sided. So if you come down the street, it actually draws you to it. And then once you're in the space, it interacts there. The one idea is that we, in budget permits, we would do two channels of this drain so that you could actually stand in the middle. And ideally, we would have water that is synchronized. Or that would be synchronized so that they work in unison, you know, they work in different stages. Now, the more programming that we do to that and the more water volume you want to see, the more expensive it is. So if anybody's expecting a logio found, what, we just have to talk about that.
And I think we would be having enough to expect with the park. Because that's just going to be all ups and downs.
Right. And, and it's not really synchronized because I think what happens in Winter Garden is the water comes up and the water goes down.
Yeah, just it's kind of ups downs, you know.
Right.
Looks like it's had a couple of different synchronization maybe.
And that's really kind of what we're, we're getting at is, is for the price point, how much water is coming through. If it's interactive, one thing I'm talking to one of the designers and consultants for this is because it's going to be a civic, we're approaching this as a civic fountain that can be used by children as a wet deck. It is not intended to be a wet deck playground. This is the other, just so everybody buys into that approach to it because they kind of have two different levels, like it's of expectation. The, the original concept of the special avenue is, and we feel it is, that this is a civic fountain and that is civic and interactive from the sense that children walk through it, like white, Winter Garden. I think there's a civic feature, but there is a small, that you could walk through, but it doesn't feel like a playground.
Right. All those kids are going through it, it certainly isn't like. My expectation, I'll be honest, is no wet deck found. And that's just.
And, and I will say that, that our idea right now, that it is a plump plaza. It has a slight drainage point to it, to the center. So then when the fountain is turned off, you can actually do farmer's market or whatever events. You can actually use this space as arts and media. So as this space, again, back to my original question, the surface that kids would be walking on, is it going to be a concrete, is it going to be anti-slip? It's not going to be a shiny painted thing that's going to fall? What do you? No, because it is a wet deck and former school has jurisdiction over this, that it will, what we're looking at, we'd like to use something more like, or very high in material. And that's just what we have to look at in the budget. Right now, what we're holding is a concrete slab without internal drainage. It'll be drains within that concrete base and an acrylic topping that we could color and do as many patterns as we'd like.
That would be GBA, it'll be some type of.
And it will be anti-slip, yes. Now, it's not, it's probably a five to seven year life, that needs to have to be replaced after that point. But if we did grant it, whatever design we end, install is what we have for long stretch.
And as you said, you didn't want this to be like a playground, so, okay, so you guys, to the mayor's point, you had, you know, a hundred kids in there and they're all hanging out and they're just getting wetness, staining that mean. So it's sort of like a playground.
I guess the distinction that I would make is when you first walk up to this and you look at it, you don't go, oh my gosh, I have no kids playground, I need to go find the adult space.
Right.
That this is, you can sit here in the, under the palms, you're in a future restaurant. While there's nobody in the town, the men in the town are just working at the time. It just is a decorative civic fountain.
Right. So I think you just run in there cool often, not kind of like, yeah, it's not like a wet one.
Give me a length and a width. I'm looking at this and I'm trying to, just open up my head. I'm looking at that doorway and saying, not as wide as that doorway from the doorway to the wall.
Well, actually, the, the width of this, these two lines in the, in the middle sketch is at its widest point about 25 feet.
About 25 feet.
And so the, so the basis we were originally working with is about, this square, this rectangle here is about 25 by 60. So it's about 1600.
Right, but I'm, I'm just trying to.
Well, the fountain is.
Just the, just the two fountain strips I'm talking.
They're probably 40, 20 feet long.
Forty feet long, front and back here.
Yeah.
How wide?
The tray is probably.
Two trays. So like the doorway, I said, if I said width to width that doorway there and stretch it from here to this wall, that's what I'm looking at is approximately. Because I'm just trying to look at it, it's running through that in my head going, okay, you're sitting over there. You know, well, I, I meant the Winter Garden one, but my head just keeps going to the one. Downtown Disney at the far corner, they have, you know, the ones I tend to see are more rectangular, round or. Rectangular in shape. I'll say, because the kids go like this, run in and out versus up and down. You know what I mean? That's, I'm just looking at that going, we're, we're building it this way.
Or they could, I mean, but the way the space is oriented, they could run.
Far.
No, no, the, the direction of it actively, you know, certainly is towards.
Is that water going to be chlorinated?
Yes, it's pool water.
That's what I'm saying, it's pool, right?
Wow. Make it adventurous.
Yeah, take the water out of the lake, right?
Yes.
And it's polluted.
It's pool, it's pool.
Just pump the water right out of the lake, splash it up and down, put it back. No.
Chloride is good, pool water, that's good. We know what lives in lakes in Florida.
I would just ask our guys to ask all those, like, ask Winter Park, ask when it's, ah, not Winter Park. When it's spring. Whoever has, Sanford has one, don't they have one down up in? Start seeing, like, like put in a pool. You put it in a pool, everybody goes like this, I want the biggest pool, I'll, I'll suffer my, my pool size. I want bigger pool size. And they suffer their deck and then later on they go, I wish I had more deck than pool. So let's see what they feel afterwards, if we get there, what they did and what they would say.
You know, you've got to remember, we're committing, it's all kids, kids are all.
And that's, I'm sure that's a long stretch.
That thing has got to be able to accommodate kids, you know. We've got to get away from the arts and part of it for a minute and realize who are artists. So, I mean, I'm fine with it where it is.
I love the way I hear it and where it sits. Again, I still, and later we may go, ooh, I wish we made it wider, bigger, probably, you know, that kind of thing. The, again, being long and strip, a runway is my concern. First, and I love that out of the trees, everybody says, that's exactly it, the parents will sit over here and they'll go run.
I don't like the run of this so much, it's just, I think it needs more, well, maybe even a circle in the middle or something that's got more, you know, big round area in the center or a half a moon in the center going the other way. And part of that is how, how programmed these two pieces are. Well, you. I think the concept is there, we've got a long way, a lot to go. The concept is there, but I think we're, I hear council coming from, it's a great concept, great idea. If you want to go for it, just make sure it's, it's splash. Not, not a decorative fountain, but a decorative fountain becomes the secondary part of the area for the kids to run around, interact and, you know, it's what we are.
I think, for my subvention too, I think what I'm hearing is more like what it was before. This, this is very different from what we were shown for the first time, more splash pattern.
The idea of the wall and the screen, I mean, that's cool. I think it gives everybody else a, a little bit more splash.
More splash to it then.
Yeah, but you could do those troughs and, you know, have that at quiet time, you know, kind of going up and down. It's not a splash bed, but when Parks and Rec turns it on, it's a splash bed on a Saturday afternoon with the kids. Let's make it look like, you know, we got jets everywhere, it's a splash bed. But it's not splash bed time and it's the adult time at night, it's turned off. You know, then it can look kind of like that runway deal that you had in mind.
Want to be lights that will, will do.
That is, yes, we can.
That's a pricing thing.
Yeah, there will be lighting inside the jets just because of the cost issue. We certainly, because of this floor, it will go, this has jurisdiction over this. We also have to have angle light in front of them. So what we'd like to do at night certainly is make it as accessible as possible.
And that's why I just see it becoming another feature at night rather than water, because of light feature, exactly.
Splash bed could be at a day, you know, salt feature could be at night.
A light feature, right.
You could get out of the water, set up pool water and get.
Turn the water off. That's what I'm saying. To be honest?
That's the chief problem.
Turn the water off. Turn the water off, the wet side.
And then, and what we have, looking, looking on, we've got the wet deck here. Next to that is the same one along, which is artificial turf. It has the chess, chessboard in it, the large chess pieces. And again, around the edges of that are the seating and the light pylons, which light pylons, you'll see there. This will have festoon lighting over it, which is the tape lighting. So it'll be very festive at night. So if you don't choose to sit in the palms, you sit in that area. It is connected, as we said, you can move left to right across the bottom of the page into the purple, which is the Thai lot, past the restaurants, right here against the street and the coffee shop, which is up against the promenade. Envisioning that that is a double sided window service so you can get coffee from the promenade side or the playground side. One thing that we've done, and this is really the start of kind of where this wetland character comes into the space. We see the large tree in the middle of this patterned concrete area. What we're suggesting is that is one of the senator plums, the cypress tree that they've actually plumb at. I think Longwood has just planted one and it's a, I think it's about 40 foot high cypress tree. Very large and it certainly has a lot of legacy and symbolism because it is a direct plumb in front of Senator. So that really anchors that. And it would also, we're thinking of having gravel seating underneath that just in the springtime when that thing's leaping out, bright green, like if they're about to do, just an awesome feeling. In the fall, when it turns that wonderful bronze color, great. And in winter, because it looks, well, you get, you get the lighting through, you get the sunlight coming through. So it's nice and warm and very easy flow into the.
And we can have a naming thing for ours because it's Longwood is Senator two. And Seminole counties is called the Phoenix, so a lot to name ours. I'd love the city manager to find some chicken feet.
And then what we do, like just a little more detail about the light pylons, as we live in the river, the parks are around the family area. And what we're thinking. And what we're thinking, on the far left, you can see kind of the celery and that's the taller one. The one on the far right, where the family lawn is, we're doing a kind of citrus motif. Using flowers and, you know, circular shapes, which is either sun or orange. You know, it's more of an art interpretation. And the one in the middle would be next to the, around the children's area, which there's three next to that. And that's more of an osprey. So if artistic interpretation of layering of shapes and forming that, and the reason is, as we move, here you can see the light pile laws around next to the children's area. One of the reasons we did this is we didn't want to put light poles right up against the seawall. So instead of putting the standard light fixture up against the promenade, we're actually using these light pile laws to put, you know, ambient lighting. You put candles out on the promenade in these spaces. So when you're here at the children's area, you've got the ospreys. When you get past the coffee shop, which is this red block in the middle, you can see the pile laws on the other side, that's where the citrus mix up. When you get to the front by the veterans' tribute, that's where it's celery. When you get out to where it starts the project, out by the residential, that's where the purple motif is. So we start tying in a lot of what, a lot of the tradition and the legacy and things that are found historically that we do and, you know, using that as an identifier.
What kind of lights are going to be out in that lake? Could it be in the out, in the lake? Anything in the lake at all? You know, I know some of that stuff will spill over, is there any way to light that lake up like, you know, at night? You know, whatever spills over from that, like, is it going to be like multi-colored spots or anything going out into the lake?
Anything from the perimeter of the lake?
Yeah, yeah.
We hadn't planned on it, but certainly, and this is, it's a great segue if I might, just for a moment. What we've done here, if anybody does get a picture about this image from Canadian Vision earlier on.
Okay.
That there's, we've already removed the railing, 42 inch railing. And added instead, you can see it in more of the detail on the lower there. It's a 13 inch wide by 16 inch wide concrete curb. And for your reference, on the website that they agents, the city of Sanford, against their waterfront, which was installed six years ago. Equal height discrepancy between water and finish. And they have a very wide seawall there. There's also a picture of West Palm Beach along their new waterfront. Similar condition, very similar, it's a promenade with seating and other flexible activities all to the side. The reason that we're suggesting this is probably everybody's been to a condo at the beach and you sit out on your balcony and you ring, you want to look out. You know, you're trying to do that because the handrails are 40 inches high and it happens to be right in the future. That was something when we're sitting here, if you're sitting here along the promenade and we've added some seating on the backside of the children's area, or if you're sitting on the family lawn area to look out and not see where the water touches the ground or, you know, where the shoreline is. We thought it was an opportunity to actually make this thing feel a little bit bigger because the lake, interestingly enough, if anybody's been downtown Orlando by Orlando Regional, Orlando Health, their new campus, or the campus, they just opened a park there, a Lake Beauty Park. You can't miss it, it was a big red, a long orange avenue. That water body is almost identical to the size of yours. So if you want to get a good idea of how big and scaled this thing is, that'll do it. Now, water level, we've got, we've got retaining wall, they go get it in the sense that we have a lot more program and activity going around our lake than they do theirs. So having this wall down and getting rid of that railing, we think is a very, you know, it's a visual thing as well as spatial. And it provides element of seating.
Okay, next.
Oh, good.
You said 10 minutes.
So, okay, so what we did on the boardwalk, and there are some of certain areas where we may need a rail. So what we've done, let's start from the promenade where we have the interjection during the wet decks, which are at the boat house spot and at the coffee shop, there are three bump outs into the wall. So what we've done is we've taken that beauty bearing motif, you can see here used in a panel. And we're using that as a glittered metal, so it's actually a negative image of that for that railing. Just in those spots, so we're spending a little more money, but we're using it for, you know, some punch points. So you stand up there and you have there, you can picture picket. What we did in the other areas, because we didn't want to really do kind of a picket on center, drew from a chicken legacy. And there is a stainless steel bash that's used quite extensively. It's found in parks and actually this was in New York. So you're watching in DC, one of the JFK Park, very strong. But you'll see in these pictures, you don't really see the screen off. It's very strong, but it's also very permeable. The cost is a, you know, so what we're doing is we're just doing a very simple frame around it. And this is much like chain link, you know, attaches to that frame, but then visually it disappears. Instead of looking like chain.
But it's a lot higher quality.
It looks more like, see, it's kind of a nog to chicken wire.
But it doesn't look like chicken wire instead of high quality.
Yeah, much more high end in that regard.
But it's visually really permeable.
Like the teeth are out.
Yeah. And a nice chunk wood rail on boardwalk. So if you're holding next to that, you know, your hands are touching something that's more.
Deep.
Yes.
Yeah. The playground, very quickly, because I know we have to move on. This is where we're taking the wetland character and drawing. You know, there was a discussion very early on about having a relationship with play equipment, manufacturer to be able to change equipment out every so often. Which we still have some standard play equipment pieces in here. But the big idea that we have here is bring the wetland character in. All the play equipment that you look at the manufacturers are designed to do certain things for major muscle groups and the box and portation and whatnot. So what we did from the wetland side, bringing that design character into it, was we have, we've designed this as kind of a little micro column transect, if you will, of the land form that is OVO and most of Central Forest. So we've got two large rock climbing walls here that we're assuming are standard pieces of play equipment. Which work, you know, upper body, you know, you never get real tired of climbing because all the play equipment does is just lets you climb in their ways. And then we've got the two bird sculptures, which are kind of depicted in our graphic here in the lower, right? And those are here next to, so they're within the shop, the promenade, and next to the trellis, which is seating for event lawn and playground. And then we have other off the shelf play items that are very plant-like, aquatic, plant-like, you know, that move and spin. There's the standard off the shelf items that can be replaced over time. But then what we do with the placers, I mean, then we certainly reinforce the land form and the water movement through there. We have parent seating under the tree canopy against the promenade here. The white square, this little left is the boat house control structure that. We'll just maybe able to use it, your staffing, the bar for something in the future for the boat house. And then what we have here on the trellis, instead of doing your standard trellis, you probably see a little better detail on your sheet, oh, that's not the osprey, that's a trellis. So if you look at the shadow patterns on the ground, it's not just your typical trellis that you see anywhere. Now you're starting to get a little bit more of that wetland character, whether you're under cypress or you're looking out at the osprey nest, which we have on the other side of the way. So it really now starts tying all this identity very strongly back to the wetland. We then have on the east side of that, the large plaza, which punctuates out for the future bohramp to the left, or sorry, to the right of that, is a very large flex lawn that goes up to the future farmer's market. That lawn is sized such that it will handle a 60 by 100 foot tent. So it's very flexible in the early phase, it could be used for families, farmer's markets right now, et cetera. And has very easy access to the playground through the trellis. Early, you remember the early shot of this, so now we've taken out the fabric, you know, it's here and that, that wooden osprey trellis.
It's going periscope?
Yes.
We have the periscope in there as well. It's a fun challenge designing those because I've never seen one, but I'm up for it. This is the enlargement of the west end of the amphitheater. So at this grade, you can see a land view, we're about eight foot to the top of the landing here and the street grade. So we've got a ramp within there, 5% or less, so we don't need handrails going up the ramp. We've spaced the stairs, the steps out, they're not stairs, now it's groups of steps. So we don't need handrails for those anymore either. We've taken out the walls here because we're using that caprock wall someplace else and we're grading down at a three in line, you can kind of see that we're comparable to the top there from a park, public park in Miami.
So the amphitheater is going to have a flatter ground surface than what you originally planned?
No, no, it's the same, this is just the edge that abuts the walkway around the lake. So it's still going up at that 3% that we talked about before. So we're at the same height as we were before, all I did was take out.
But is that going to be flat enough for us to use it?
Yeah.
Because originally you were talking flat and bold.
Right, and in the grading, we've actually, you see the cat point for second, we've actually regraded that so it is more whole shape for more, I think it's more flat. Love the lane going up.
All right, well, we're not experts on that, if you are, you are. You say you want it to work, it works. Just, you know, make sure it's flat enough that we can use it.
Yes.
Serves the purpose where it gives enough of a grave, where they put a lawn chair, you can kind of see over the person.
Right.
And accommodate a large group of people.
Yes, sir. And I think that is the.
What happened to the big boardwalk going out, oh, there's suicide, boardwalk.
That, that's been done in the office experience.
Lover's league, whatever you want to call it.
That is something that.
What happened to it now?
It's, well, it's, it's still within there, we haven't shown it. Because, you know, when we're talking about numbers for a second, that's one of those items that are, people like to have it in there, it's just one of the, the new part of the next steps is question what it is or what it could be, what are the prior world items that the city could want?
We want to do it, we're great, we can afford it. So I'm going to go, I'm going to go over numbers and you guys can tell us if you want it.
Get a zip line over this lake, you know, kind of like a way. I love doing the one. Would that be, I mean, I'm definitely told, say, would that not be something that people want to come in and kids, they call the sax, would want to do, Drew's going, okay, I see those bucks, 80 bucks a pop, do it, you know? Would be a pretty cool thing over that lake. And that is a buzz thing, everybody's got a zip line. When they put zip lines on cruise ships, you know everybody wants one. Shane's got one in his backyard, of course, yeah.
Did you really?
No.
All right, so bottom line numbers.
Hardscape, 1.5 million. Now, that does not include, that number currently does not include the future restaurant, which we all know, the future amphitheater, which we all know. Doesn't include the boardwalk fly up.
It includes everything, it shows.
Yes, it doesn't include the future boerdock and it does not include the periscope yet, simply because we haven't detailed out the periscope.
How is the boerdock, what about those two? What's your one?
Periscope. Periscope, those three things, so we're at 1.1.
So you said yes to the amphitheater or no?
The amphitheater and the future restaurant have always been.
Right, okay, it's a separate item.
Now landscape, because we have some of the hardscape, landscape is relatively minimal. That's about, landscape and irrigation, and irrigation is 153. So we're at a total of 1.68 million with a contingency of 15%, which is 250,000, currently at 1.9 million.
Right, and what that does also, I think.
It's active system, it's public.
That's everything that you.
The bathrooms, the.
Yes.
What that does, and a lot of the big line items in there is about 300,000 of the wet deck, which if you do materials and labor, you're paying about 150 for materials and.
That includes television screen.
The video towers we have in there right now, we're carrying line.
Yeah, we have that included.
So 2 million dollars gets us other things for sure today. Let's see.
Well, 650 is something similar to what you thought.
That's about the building.
Yeah, not about the back building.
It's about the back building.
No, we have looked at the numbers with Tom. The need, the need.
That's what we needed for the 650.
Yeah, it was 650 was, is the median theater, but you add structure to that, you know.
Million five.
Million five.
Does this include the green on the amphitheater?
Yeah.
Grassy area?
Yes.
So that whole thing, lawn, panel, amphitheater, that's all, but it isn't, it's not the stage.
That's only all the green, all the grass is included in others.
Yes, in others.
Okay.
This is our cost for everything going up the back.
Oh, gotcha.
Yes.
Because the numbers of all the retaining walls you saw, the walkways, that's all part of the developers.
The speed skate.
That's on their side, that was already negotiated into the original. What we're looking at here for our 2 million, for all the amenities you saw.
In the veterans' park? That's all included?
Dog barn.
Dog barn, true.
Are we correct about that, Mr. Cameron? Everything is good, council.
So, yeah, so the things we were nervous about was the fly up and boardwalk. That was really tipping the scales.
Deviations to talk about.
Lots going to change in a second, so.
All right.
Tell me, what's the, what we have somewhere around 3 million?
3.4 is what I got, if much began.
It was 2 million of the year.
1.9.
1.5 for what I'm considering then. That's what we saw today, 1.5.
Yes.
700,000. At the amphitheater, they said about 1.5 with the bathroom.
Yes.
With the.
How about lovers, would you?
1.5.
1.9.
And what about the landscape?
That's a valid answer.
It's a natural 1.9. And then I make a connection, 1.9 is hard, soft, and.
Yes.
3.4, what are we getting?
Right now, we have probably about 210,000. Plus we only need four acres or three acres of land. But we only need three acres of land. Now, once we start to develop it, sell it, create an office building, whatever funds we get from that. That's where the difference will come in. Well, we can phase it also, there's also a lot of deviations coming up. We can phase it, see, we can see our. Can phase it with CRA too.
Correct. I guess the question, you know, look forward.
And based on where we are today, can we move forward with concerning gardens? Based on everything that was out there.
The only, the only change I heard was splash.
You wanted to make that more splashy.
More splashy during the day and more adult.
Yes.
Your, your, I think your adult atmosphere thought process was an excellent one, is what I heard from everyone. But I think that during the day, when it's, you know, 100 degrees out in the summer, you know, let's make it the place where the kids can come down and, you know, count around, splash around. You know, and then at night, whenever Drew keeps it open, you know, let's say till eight, seven, it turns off and, you know, it becomes more of a white. Powerful program. I would assume that at 1.9 million, well, the budget won't be sore. It'd almost be a, at least a mind thought process.
Well, we had, there was a couple other minor things that we were asked to look. Well, we had, there was a couple other minor things that we were asked to look at widening right now. The Jimmy Buffett stage, maybe making a higher quality material and adding the bank of lights. So we got all those in as well.
Say it at 10% to what we're still.
That's right now, or that's with the building right now, that's for 2.6.
Some amphitheaters.
Well, the amphitheater is.
That's a separate issue.
At 2.6, we can do what we've talked about, the 1.9 on the amphitheater, not the building associated with it, but the amphitheater for 2.6.
And we have roughly five.
Roughly. That's 700, 700,000 for the amphitheater and 1.9. So roughly we can.
And as counsel, as Jake said, we can either tap CRA dollars, we can sell land, we can lease land.
We've got a restaurant pad that we can lease, we've got other things.
There are a bunch of different other things that we have set up in this arrangement where we'll be able to afford whatever we want to do down. The other issue, and this isn't an issue to debate tonight, of course, but the thought processes, the CRA, of course, has bonding abilities. There's no real TIF dollars coming off of you right now to bond. The world is free to bond up to X every year, where if we wanted to just complete the whole thing, once we did this phase one portion of it that they proposed this evening, and it really started to gain steam and momentum, you know, if we want to turn around and say, okay, let's finish that amphitheater, let's put in that farmer's market thing with the periscope, the lovers league, or whatever we want to do, and we have 500 in cash and we need another million, you're bonding.
And the other thing is, it's going to keep adding things. I think that's another, you know, not having a periscope right off the bat, is we add a periscope two years from now. We add, we add, we add these old things.
How much is the periscope?
It's always, uh, same, same thing with the lovers league earlier.
It's designed, priced in.
Guys? Well, there's another whole avenue, but those are.
It can become the, you know, the.
You don't build it all, you build it all at once, it's all there, and then people expect more right off the bat. They're always going to expect more in two years.
You know, a year and a half later, two years and add a periscope.
Naming opportunities.
And then add the dock, and then add the dock, things like that. I think that's, you know, to me, what's important is that we've got all these great things. The, the things we said were 10 years ago, when we bonded all this, was there will be an amphitheater.
Oh, okay.
So that's what I'm saying, that, that needs to come out with all this, because the amphitheater needs to be there with this. That's my feeling. That's one of the biggest things people talk about, is that and the amphitheater, that and the amphitheater, and that was the bonding 10 years ago.
So if I paraphrase, I think you're asking for, we asked it to the council, if I get it wrong, just correct me. I think what you're asking for is for them to incorporate the changes that Catherine brought up with us, the three or four items into the price, then to refine the price on the front half of the amphitheater. And come back to us one more time with that complete budget. If it's in the budget of dollars, then perhaps we'll start to move forward with that amphitheater. Then we can always add the back building later.
Well, yeah, again, I think we need to look at the amphitheater, and whether we peek off a component here that says, well, the dog park doesn't get done at first, that was never promised 10 years ago. It's a great addition, we can add that in six months, a year. I, I look at the, what we bonded, what we went out to 10 years ago and said, this is what we're going to build. In there was the words amphitheater.
That's a good point.
So we can add, and I, I like adding things, like I said, we've got a dock to add, a periscope to add, a this to add, a things to add. I think we have to prioritize and say, having that amphitheater, we have that whole space out there, that was the bonding 10 years ago.
All right, so why don't we approach it at that perspective? Currently, you've got basically a goal for what you showed us this year. What we'd like to see is the changes, the different materials on the decking. I think it was just that stage and whatever with the deck.
Even wider, the lighting.
Lighting.
The con, using, looking at concrete structure and making it wider, those were three items. The fourth thing was the splash pad, making sure it was kid splash pads in the day.
And then, you know, we can always refine the numbers and then move to the council's point. Let's start working on amphitheater, even if it's something like, we may have a garden, which is not a real start. And then we can look at that secondary back building, we may be able to fit that into our budget currently, or as the council said, if we have to fly in an extra 100 or two to add into it. I'm not into deleting this building, but I understand its point.
Yeah, I understand, however we get there, you know, that's.
I'd rather you come back to us and say, all right, 2.6, we do the whole thing, and then we sit with our city manager, we figure out where $100,000 is going to come.
This money.
It's about choices, not money, that's. We, we're then going to make the choices at that point. But like I said, that's, I think we need to look at that as a priority, part of the prioritization.
Mike Roberto used to always, never got money, it's only about choices. So, but I, but I think.
The whole building, what do you have to do?
But I think what you see in front of us is excellent. I think everyone's excited about it. I didn't see one council member not. I think the residents are going to be, we are far going to exceed their expectations with this part, in, in the way that you're designing it, and, you know, we're proud to have you as partners. I mean, I know this is, this has been there and due to you for either 10 years now, to see it all coming into fruition as all of us are, which is exciting, it's been, you know, it's a shame Mike Roberto is here to share all this with us, because if you all remember mine, you know, none of this would have happened probably because it wasn't thwarted. I mean, Mike was the guy behind the scenes making everything happen. So.
Mike Catherine, what about us trying to, to get at least some on the other hand, how we can come up with an extra $900,000 to the whole thing? And then it's happening, we're talking about one year.
Well, Tom, the hardscape stuff is going to be coming, what we talked about tonight is essentially going to be coming up out of the ground.
Yeah, but I mean, I think if.
End to end, we've come at least two budgets, I would think.
I think we have some opportunities to partner with the.
Yeah, because we have a grand opening.
For some money.
We could have a naming.
The amphitheater, naming and partnerships, there's, you know, an outdoor venue for UCF down in Waukesha, possibly, maybe some of the space, or things like that for outdoor summer productions that they're going to do. Or name it for some place, or there's some opportunities there that we could, or again, I think there's a big friends will lead on that as.
Or, see, as the council agreed, just suggested, you know, we figure out how we do it, then we pay our, the payers. We go out, we fight cases, like, you guys can fight.
We could do that on our own.
That we could do. We can easily bond.
$100,000.
Yeah, we can fight it, we can do it like. Whatever mechanism.
You're looking for a no-no.
Yes.
The go, no-go is just on what they showed us tonight. So is that a go?
Yeah.
All right, that's a go. All right, I'm with the approvals of this.
Yes, that's no.
The next phase of this, I'm going to assume is that quicker up than later, perhaps over the next 90 years, let's set a timeline, 69, 60, 90.
90 is reasonable to finalize construction down from the center, and we're going to quickly get Tom to heat it.
Right. Tom is very patient.
He is, he is very patient.
The next phase, I think, I think what council needs from, from Dick Slater is now your next idea is, we want to know what to say most, and I'm pointing the end. That whole thing, two phases and that's all, because obviously if they're not to globalize to build the whole, might be a little bit.
And then relative to coordination of the architecture for that, we will need to work with the architect. How would you like us, who would you like us to work with relative to the architect? Do you have anybody?
For us?
Who would you want some?
And let's get an idea of what then is. The other three or four line items, I think those are friends will be the ones, you know, they're all, you know, lovers league, the periscope.
That's where we're, we're kind of, that's kind of where we were coming from, those specific items.
Those are the.
Attachment, attachment, donation items.
Thank you, guys.
Artistic question here, what it relates to is the location of the stage.
Jimmy Buffett.
Jimmy Buffett's stage and reference to the. And just tell me what you think about that proximity and whether that would create an issue with someone wanting to ask serene, or with meditation, like they have their guitars and playing, and I don't think it would be an issue most of the time, it would have someone who's on their weekend. Did you consider that or is that something?
Yeah, and that's a great point, when you look at the plan view, we, actually, if you look at the sketch, the, the new improved city sketch from the street view, this one. Yes, sir, that one. You can see how the, the tall wall of the tribute actually would shield your view from the public stage, because there's really not a spot where you could put the tribute anywhere within this park, because it's not, the park's not that big, to be able to shield you from that, but we felt it was, it deserved enough of that positional to be able to.
Everybody says it's in a good spot because it's, it's prominent and we can keep an eye out. The other guy said, you know, if you've got kids, you know, playing in the water.
I want to talk here, though. Sometimes these memorials, they're stuck over there, because everybody always says sticking on the quiet side.
I like the multi-use that you allow. The real thing is that those three pictures, we show this.
Can I share with you what the committee, what the committee said?
Well, you can do this, is a great thing, right? You can have Memorial Day celebration, have.
Committee was okay with it?
All the people.
I asked that exact question to the committee, and we have a couple representatives here, so correct me if I'm wrong, but I asked the exact same question, would, would they prefer it to be over on the quiet side? And their preference was that they actually preferred it to be in the midst of the activity there.
So I disagree.
The veteran members of the committee told us that if you wanted something solid in the cemetery, they actually wanted, they liked the multi-use idea of the park, they liked that, that the interaction of the park.
We did hear it, hear that, that. Were you with me at the, the BFW that night? Remember what, Mary, did you want her down too?
No. Also, if you notice the name change, so the veterans memorial, trying to shift a little bit the veterans' tribute.
Yeah, they, they, that night when I was there and I showed them, the first thing they said is, you know, why we don't wait in the back there? Not that they weren't appreciative of what we were doing, it's just that they.
Like I said, having that multi, being able to use it like this, is a fantastic phenomenon. At least at Memorial Day, you can have as, as big a little band, you know, old band there playing and still have room for everybody and do things. You have enough, you know, you have enough size there to be able to have a gathering of people.
And a large, it expands.
And a big amount of people, rather than just trying to squeeze it in.
Guys, thank you so much. Appreciate it. Go forth and construct with minor changes. All right, Catherine, let's go through these deviations as quickly as we can.
Sure, we'll, we'll go as quickly or as slowly as you need to. These have all arisen through the three different components. The, the Oviedo on the Park site development order is one piece. If you flip over to page three, the Park Place Apartments, that site development order is the second part of this, and then the third is the building permit for Park Place Apartments. So there aren't deviations required for each of those three different components. Staff has.
Required or they're being requested?
Excuse me, they're being requested. We, we need to grant a deviation in order for them to be able to do these the way they want it. That's correct. As land use administrator, we have the authority to approve these, however, some of them are quite substantial, and we want to make sure you all were aware and comfortable with some of these deviations. So, and also, we're trying to accommodate the timelines of Oviedo on the Park and keep it moving, so I thought this would be appropriate to tie it into this work session. The first component, we just go through them very quickly. The first page has the Oviedo on the Park site development order. Number one, two, and two, there's only two of these, and both of these are related to canopy trees, setback issues that, I don't want to reread this to you, but that we have worked with Dave Waller, but anyway, we have worked out a way to not have to do the root barrier product.
You say, they said that didn't work, is what I read was, it doesn't work, they found it doesn't work.
It's better to do it the way.
It's better to do it the way, anyway.
Let's ask the simple question, are the amount of trees changing or just the way you're planting?
Just the planting of the root barrier.
Done, next.
Hold on.
Oh, sorry.
We're not running through it because we want to. That's the first one.
Listen, you were late.
Five, five minutes, eight minutes, you're fine, you'll live.
The two. Number two is, this was part of the deviation that you all.
13.3%, you can do that, can't you?
13 quid or no?
You can do 13.3.
Well, actually, on this, technically, the way the code is written, as land use administrator, I could do all of it.
Huh?
But I chose to bring it to council, which is the way it was written.
Oh, it's a development order, just for this.
Just in this area, I hope you don't worry.
Yeah, just, just, just in this, this, this.
That's a scary thing there, folks. We'll move on from there now.
I am bringing.
Wait a minute, but that's a scary thing to be told, that we did that, that was a slip through here.
Deviation number two, you've already really taken care of. You granted the conveyance of the property to accommodate it.
That was a couple of the. The 18, yes, sir. So are we in consensus on the deviations necessary for the Oviedo on the Park site development?
Well, let's call them what they are, the root balls of the tree.
Root barriers, eliminating.
Well, we've already approved for the.
And, yeah, pretty much the okay.
Is anybody okay with that?
They're the easy ones.
Yep.
Those are the easiest.
Hang on a second.
Sort of the other easy one, we'll see if number two.
Council, do you care about root balls or something?
I don't care about root balls.
Obviously, we'll get the same amount of trees.
Yeah, what it is, was we, we made sure with the arborists that we could not damage the sidewalks and still have the canopy look of the trees.
And one of the things that the arborists also let us know was that the types of trees that are proposed are, they, they work well.
What kind of trees?
I don't know.
Next.
Okay.
Next.
The next ones might be a little bit more difficult. These are the Park Place Apartments site development order deviations. These have to do with the landscaping. Yeah, let's turn to attachment three.
Well, let me ask you a question.
Is that landscape plans or the streetscape?
Can I ask you a question on these parking deviations?
Yes.
All of this is on the interior of the park, that's correct. They're going to be parking on the ceiling of the apartments and not anything that you can see through the road or, the only people he's impacting are his own residents.
That's correct.
Okay, who cares?
Attachment three, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
First. Oh, and the second, oh.
COVID attachment.
Third fold, it has color.
Okay. Third, fourth, this one.
The last one, the littlest one, the VHB one.
VHB, sorry, attachment three. The code is, this one, the interior and the terminal components of the parking area, the number of spots in the parking, technically, they're just outside the code. We have color, we color coded it for you if you want to get into the very big details, but the, the purple and the yellow are the end caps of the parking structure, the medians in the parking areas. The green on the far left is the one that has to do with the buffer surrounding the parking area, and it's, it's just a little shy of our buffer requirements. Yeah.
And what is a buff? What's our next word? We're talking Kelly Fitness and that area. And what does a buffer, what's her name, so we're talking Kelly Fitness and that area is to the left of it?
This actually will abut the other townhomes.
The other townhouse, okay.
Correct. So the, the buffer minimum in our code is 10 feet. This varies from three, four to nine feet. So there are some places where it's pretty substantially less than the 10-foot required, some places that it's really, really close.
What will it be? What will the buffer be?
As, as proved in these plans right here, if you approve this, it will go, in some places it's 3.4, 5 feet, in some places it's.
What physically will it be? I need to describe it.
Trees and shrubs.
Trees and shrubs.
Would that be green stuff? Yes, this is the, that's very, it should be 10 feet going down certain areas.
Four.
The other side is the townhomes.
If I burn them, kind of stuff, it's crazy. Shrubby shrubs. Shrubs or hedges? I'm looking for it. See-through or no? More hedges, not see-through.
The townhomes.
Townhomes.
The north side, that's where the townhomes would be. On the south side, the parking.
You've got a, you've got a opaque buffer garage buffering Kelly Fitness from the residence.
The end caps, you're just getting rid of the, just the number of end caps is less, mid caps or whatever.
It's the width.
The width of the caps?
Yeah.
And that's the.
Some are supposed to be 10 and they're eight.
I'm trying to go through like one, two, three and see what we. So landscaping terminal islands are going to be thinner. That's number one. Number two is the interior, a very similar thing. Instead, the interior islands are less of them.
No, they're thinner.
They're thinner, they're also going to be, the interior, the end caps are going to be thinner and the ones inside are going to be thinner, okay? Number three, same thing, interior islands, they're going to be thinner. That's what number three is. Required buffer, the off-street is, what's that?
That's the buffering green.
Buffering green, okay. Five, okay. Now we're, okay. That's, I just want to know what, that's what I'm saying, I just want to know where we're getting, you know.
It's all these parking issues.
Right, and that's okay, as long as, so one through four.
Sure, one through four is the parking lot.
We're all okay with that, so I'm just trying to get where we're at so we're all on the same page and not kind of getting lost in the. The buffering in the purple and the islands.
Okay with that.
I'm good with those.
More importantly, we need color elevations of these grounds because this is changed from the original, what I've seen, when I sent out the.
So we're done with these? Okay, now we're.
Before anything is approved, this has to come back because this all looks the same. I see no difference in this, I see no difference in elevations.
Where are you at?
I'm just, I just skipped the building elevations, the black and whites. There is, there is no deviation to the left. This is just the elevations.
Oh, no, there's a deviation to the elevations. There's a deviation to the elevations. I just want to get to number five. Where, tell me where to look for number five, let's do this systematically.
All right. Number five and six are related to the signage.
That and.
Oh, signage.
On the backside.
Okay.
On these two. So this color, we're on this one.
That's it, you got this, Brittany.
Matchment four.
Color.
This was, this was the actual seller that was talking about. This is an example that Mr. Campbell, so you can see how you can use that.
What number do you want, I'm sorry? Page four and six, five and six?
Well, this ain't allowed.
This ain't allowed.
Yes.
You're not even close.
The basic of this is, you know, your downtown code was written for mixed-use buildings that have retail on the first floor and then office and residential above, okay? And so over that retail, so you have canopies, you have something shaded, walk under. Underneath those canopies are very small projecting signs, I mean, very, very small, not something like this. And so that's, this is where you have the single-use building, apartment building, trying to fit into a mixed-use code. And the size of the sign is to, so that it's basically, so that it's visible from a general ground, that's the scale. And, but that's what we're really talking about here is that your code create, is to create.
Right, just like I said, it looks, I love the scale of this one, it just looks scaled.
Yeah, this, this is fitting to a five-story building.
This is just an example.
Right, this is the actual sign itself and how it fits to a three-story building.
Brian, how many signs are there going to be?
Well, that's one of the things that, so far this is the only one that we talked about. In your report, that was one of the things that we have recommended to you to make this the only one for the whole complex.
As a condition.
As a condition.
You know what it is, and I think to the mayor's point, what he's saying is, he's saying he doesn't like it because, you know, and Chang brings up the point, the two of them are right in the middle. We're, we're trying to go to urban, we're not used to urban, but this is urban. So you really have to kind of try to grow into it. I mean, and to Britt's point, you know, this is a five-story building, so I would think this is going to be a little smaller for a three-story building. Tom is saying, yes, so, listen, you got to, you know, change is tough and it's not something we've ever had. I mean, I first looked at it, I said, well, that somebody's house looks like a saloon out west. But, but you know what? But that, this is what we want, urban, right?
Urban would have been made with a man build four-story and five-story buildings like we originally planned.
I'm not disagreeing with that.
This is not urban and, and these elevation drawings, I mean, this should be our biggest concern, not this sign. If we're agreed on the sign, move on. This is the issue right here.
I'm sure there's a five. Are you okay with adding the condition that it would be the only one?
Yes, that I am okay with.
Number six is about the same sign.
On, on the opposite side, I'm going to say this, then. When we say that, when we say the only one.
Until the next one comes to us.
No, I'm saying the opposite side may prove, again, it may be if it's, if it's all office space, I'm going to, I want all office space, a little bit of retail at the bottom and all office space, then, you know, so when we say that, are we totally cutting it and then we'll have to change it again later if we want to put another one in?
The recommendation is that this would be the only one for this apartment.
There you go, that's it, I'll get that one more.
Okay, number, number six is on the same projecting sign. Number five was about the total maximum area of the sign. Number six is about the height of the sign itself.
Again, make it to the right scale and.
So five and six are all about the sign that we just said, okay.
Right, yeah.
Thank you.
Number seven is the ground sign.
Very last, it was in the back, very last.
Where's that?
Very last, it was in the back.
Where's your ground?
Hold on, hold on.
Sign down here at the bar.
We need color coding.
Yeah, he's killing it.
It's a single shade, it was the very last.
So the attachment to this stuff?
Uh, very, very last thing.
So we're starting from the back, so I feel like, go to the back and come forward.
That one, yeah, we, it took me a while to find.
I got it.
Out in front of the apartment, I believe it's at the front door. Is it on the circle?
Right outside.
Right.
I'm on the radius.
This is in the front, this will be in the front, towards the south end, right.
Almost right across here from the dog park.
And then that, this, this other one we're talking, the one we're talking about now is going to be up across in the back, okay, got it.
Why does it need so many signs? I mean, people know you're.
Yes.
Think it's going to be the biggest apartment complex in the city.
Will it look nice? Will it look good?
Well, this, the deviation has a lot to do with the fact that we're just a column that we're using with the parks and the time you're making together visually. It's happening.
I can hardly hear that sound, sorry.
So there is part of the aim of the.
Right.
That's the same as you, we were just looking at, very similar, it ties into what's across the street, into our park.
It ties into all of the things that we were doing with the Mariah play, as far as the design of, the whole thing with this is that the tower is nine feet tall.
Yes, which matches the towers across the street that we're building in ours.
That creates the deviation, the fact that we're integrating, integrating that.
Is the sign at five feet? It's just the tower, does the sign look like that?
The sign's at five feet, seven and a half inches, slightly, slightly higher with the base. We're, we're matching the, you know, the brick base that we're using everywhere else.
Across the street, yeah, it's matching across the street, adding a park place sign.
So the nine feet is only the. Exactly, that's the deviation.
Go the way. I'm good.
The size of the sign is.
No.
The size of the sign is.
Thank you. All right, it's the ground, rip through it.
It's the key.
Okay, that's all of the signs. The last one is number eight. That is exactly the same that we just discussed with the canopy trees and the root barriers, you know, proximity to the sidewalks.
Root barriers, same problem.
Exactly. So I believe you're okay with that. All right, the last is the building permit on the apartment. These are the facade standards. Number one, Park Place Apartment Building Permit.
Help me here.
You're right there, you're in.
This one, is it right? Uh, yeah.
Number one is essentially they're putting a basketball court in the apartment complex on the downstairs, interior basketball court.
Would I find that? Okay.
One, two, three, four, five.
Because of the way the goalposts were hit, they kept, they didn't want to put a window right there. So the deviation is to allow more space between the two windows. Now again, this is on the backside.
Right here. Oh, this is the exercise, it's right here.
So that's going to be on the backside, interiors parking lot, facing us.
Right, but it's a detail that we have to address.
Yes.
To allow them to have a wide space of wall, nothing to the way to windows.
But now that nothingness of wall, it's going to have some sort of elevation.
Were you talking, are you trying to run down the side?
There's a window here, there's a window here, there's not one in the middle.
There's windows on both sides of that.
There's a window here, there's a window here, there's not one in the middle.
Are they going to have to put some element on to make it look?
Have a present element on to make it look like.
It is rear-facing, it is a rear-facing. Yes, we dare, yes. Here we go.
Since in this neighborhood, all walls have visibility.
But you have, you have all these.
So you want us to have some type of architectural.
Some, some little architectural details. Let's do a little change in and out in paint.
Doesn't it have a, I think it has a fence line there as well, doesn't it? That's a six-foot-high fence. Tom?
I'm sorry.
Already had you off, Arthur. The, the basketball court, isn't there a six-foot fence along the perimeter?
If you go to.
Basketball court building.
There's a wall right here.
It's a wall on the outside.
Look down here, look down here for A, two dots.
What is it? No, just a fence.
I see it. Yeah, I need something.
And then.
Yeah. Put something in, just put a fake, whatever, something. An architectural detail.
Oh, Stanley Perez.
Sounds perfect. You're going to have to, I don't care what it is, just some architectural detail.
You're asking, what you're asking, it sounds like a park.
Yes, something.
A rooster.
Well, it's not significant, it's drawn, it's drawn right, it's just there, there's a mail kiosk there, there's a fountain structure, there's a small need wall, it's just unbelievably landscaped. I'm not going to let that because of my residents. Trust me, they won't be able to see that wall.
As long as there's landscaping and something else in front of it, that's fine. We're good.
That was number one of the building permit. Number two is related to windows as well. Sixty percent of the street level facade shall be windows, but again, this goes back to Brian's explanation of how this is interesting. The original intent with the, the mixed use, with the retail bottom, residential on the top, the bottom being storefront.
Well, again, let's go back to, we have colored drawings with board in part of us, no permits being issued. This is not the, this is change. This looks like anywhere USA, I'll look for some.
That's got to change.
It looks like it's changed. All right, well, we'll get some color boards then, if we'll see it, nothing's changed, we're good.
There is, you need sixty percent window, there's not, because usually it's.
It's convincing.
Single use.
It doesn't have sixty percent. Basically, Mr. Britt, what it is is that the code requires storefronts.
Yeah.
Okay.
And.
But since we're not going to have storefronts.
Since we're not going to have storefronts, we can't really do that.
What are we going to do to replace that storefront? Are they going to have stoops or something?
Some of them do, yes, some do have stoops. Some have balconies.
Oh, the balconies, I think above the balconies on the first floor.
And that's also gates to walk into the stairwell.
Brian, are they, are they using wrought iron railing for the?
Okay, so this, this is essentially what, what was submitted. This is essentially what was submitted. These are all, like, inside here are all the different materials, like they were in the picture, like different materials, that's what he's worried about.
We're doing a paper chase just to match what.
You're reading about the different materials.
I'm equating this to taking a square peg and putting it in a round hole, that's what I.
Okay, I see, yeah, that, to me is fine. Again, I understand, we're making up the sixty percent of glass. At a storefront, we'd be having a sheet of glass on the bottom. And the mayor's point is, he's not seeing here, we don't see that, there are all the different materials that were in the picture, but all of these are still the differential materials that we, that we saw, different bottoms and tops.
The way we're doing, we're good, you're good. Yeah, black and white just threw us off of the colors, you're fine.
Are we ready for number three?
If you guys have the main two, we're having, we're like number five.
So two is the sixty percent glass, we're good with the sixty percent glass?
Everybody's good with the six percent glass deviation. That's number one.
There's number two.
There's number two.
Number one was basketball court.
Right. No, that's, I'm saying, that's for the whole, actually, the whole thing has to have sixty percent.
All right, so number three is, is street level facade, again, this just has to do with the old requirement that had arcades and awnings and weatherproofing to cover a certain percentage. Again, square ground, all doesn't work, we'd like to.
Right, all right. But now, here's, and that's fine, because we understand these are changes that we've made to this memorialized, it's going to be incredible.
Yes.
The one thing, though, that we need to be sure, Mr. Campbell, sidebar looking here, is that these elevations, the black and white elevations just, they don't keep, they don't show any. Mr. Campbell is going to submit to you tomorrow, the color elevations of these, let them out from council, let us all wrap our mind around that this matches what we originally approved. We'll email.
And, and to make up for those lack of, or the trees, we're looking at the canopy, the trees, really to provide the shade and walkways versus the canopy.
No, you can't see any of the detail, the brickwork with different colors, that's what's through the wall, but nothing is changed. It's.
I think it's. I think it's changed wrong.
Yeah, it was more to show that we weren't going to have last storefronts, which was the purpose of it.
Now, what I think that will really, once again, while we're here, and we have something before, but let's just say again, is that once we get to the other side, you know, once we start getting into phase two, that, you know, that retail ground floor, that mixed-use building, those four-story buildings, restaurant buildings, that's what we're accessing approved. We're not going to start deviating into a shopping center, we're not going to start deviating into two-story stuff, you know, if they're not submitting a regular, you know, four- and five-story product, you know, during waste, out, just in the back. I mean, the shopping...
East side.
East side.
Retail on the bottom.
Retail, mixed-use, you know.
Parks on the top.
Parks on the top. We have to strip by.
I get used to being...
Now, if we're deviating on the one side, which is primarily a residential side anyway, really wasn't an issue, that actually makes more sense, because there was none, it wasn't a parking design to do retail. The other side was plenty of parks, so it's got to go up.
Those are all the deviations, thank you, we'll be exploring that tomorrow. I have one, one last question.
I apologize for that, I just got, got it. I do apologize for that.
Pass the puck.
Can I do anything?
One more minor...
Everybody who's late, I have an appointment, you have to go.
It's very minor, the question came to me that since there is now a dog park here, although it is small, would you like to consider taking the money that we had much didn't approve for a Shane Kelly Dog Park and reconsider it down here or keep two?
Everybody keeps saying Shane Kelly Dog Park. I keep saying, Boston, uh...
Round Lake, yeah, that's, that's what I can go, wait, Shane Kelly Dog Park, hold on, hold on. Round Lake.
Catherine, both your respects, your staff keeps saying Shane Kelly, your council keeps saying Round Lake, so...
That's why we're still scheduled.
We had a work session.
We did, we talked about it.
We did consensus to have Shane Kelly.
I know, we did. Could I get you to read this along as here?
We don't have to do anything, you got that, we can do that, there.
That's a dog park, by?
Continue as planned with both.
Yeah, you guys can say, listen, just go, watch yourself, park, play.
Okay, thank you.
I spoke, you should read this to Shane Kelly Park, put Dog Park, Round Lake.
I think we need a horse park.
We can just leave it at Riverside like they use it for anyway.